PM on the ninth of October. Welcome everyone to the monthly Manzanita City Council meeting. We've got a few guests to speak to us this evening, so we're looking forward to warmly welcoming Mary Faith Bell, our excellent Tillamook County Commissioner and Nan Devlin, who's here to talk with us about an always interesting topic, which is the money that tourism taxes bring in and how it can be put to good use in our community. So Nan will be updating us on that. We've also got a number of, I would call, very productive items on our agenda tonight. We'll be hearing the first reading of a couple of ordinances and we'll be allowing time for public comment for those. We'll also, I think, be hearing from the excellent Mike Sims at some point, who's going to be presenting tonight. So welcome to, yeah, welcome to everyone who's here in person. Welcome to everyone who is online, watching live, and welcome to everyone who is settling in with a cup of coffee or tea later on after this meeting is over and watching. So thanks, everybody. And I'd like to just note that our additional counselor, Linda Kozlowski, will be attending via Zoom this evening. So have we got Linda on? Okay, we verified that?
She's here.
Okay, all right. Great, thanks, Linda. Nice to see you. So I've got Tom, one person closer to me. So if I have anybody and you need to be elbowed, he's going to be the guy for me tonight, Linda.
She's going to stomp on my foot when I talk.
Linda helps me and catches me when I make a mistake with something. So thank you. So the first question we always have is, are there any citizens here in person who have a comment they'd like to make on any topic? Have we got anybody signed in?
Mark Kessner.
Mark Kessner, great. Mark, would you come over and step? And the formality of sitting at the table again is so that people who are listening online or listening to a recording later will be able to hear what you say. So. Welcome, officer. Hi, Mark.
I'm Mark Kessner. I live here in Manzanita. I'm the North County Representative on the Tillamook Housing Commission. Just a little background, the Housing Commission exists to collaboratively advocate for attainable and equitable solutions that impact Tillamook County's greatest housing needs. To encourage construction of affordable housing this year, the Housing Commission has approximately $400,000 to dedicate to funding new affordable rental housing here in Tillamook County. The annual application process for this funding begins on Friday, and hence I'm here today, and runs for a month. After reviewing applications to be sure they qualify, we hope to interview applicants for it in December, making decisions in January, and forwarding our recommendations for final consideration to, by the county commissioners. A local example of affordable rental housing, which has received a grant from the Housing Commission called Bayside Commons, has just opened and should be filling up with residents starting this week in, on Bayside Gardens Road, just up or down from the fire station in North County here. There are 24 units, and last I heard, they'd received 60 applications for those 24 units. Four of the units are reserved for renters earning less than 30% of the area median income, and the other 20 are reserved for residents earning up to 60% of the area median income. I also understand that another affordable rental housing project is in the pre-application stage of discussions with the city of Manzanita, known as Manzanita Pines. They leave the developer his home first. This applicant is the largest and most successful developer of affordable housing in Oregon. They also received grants from the Housing Commission this past winter. We're excited by these and other efforts that address directly the affordable housing crisis that the country, state, and our county are facing. Finally, I encourage everyone to attend the Housing Commission's monthly meetings, which are the first Thursday of every month at 9:00 AM, either virtually or in person. You can find more information on the Tillamook County Government webpage under Tillamook County Housing Commission.
Excellent. Thank you, Mark, and thank you for your service on behalf of all of us on that committee. That's appreciated. Do we have anybody online?
No.
Do not. Okay, great. So thank you. It's always, always a curious thing to wonder and see then what kind of comments you have from folks, and that's nice that we've got time for just about anything, as long as it's not on the agenda. That's the only criteria. So thank you. The next thing is, we normally do, we'll move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight consists of two meetings worth of two minutes for two meetings, the September 4 regular session and the September 11 work session. It also includes approval of bills, and we normally do this, and I ask for a motion to pass in one fell swoop, rather than going through every detail unless any counselor has a particular question or concern to express before we do that.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right, great. Thank you very much.
Catherine, before we move on, I just had one comment I wanted to make. I had a friend, where you see things differently about the quarterly billing. And one of the issues that he raises to me is the increased cost of postage associated with monthly bills as opposed to quarterly. And he wanted to know how much more that figure is. And I couldn't look at the budget and pull out a figure that's a line item for postage. So I called Nina and I asked her to get me a figure, and she did. And we actually were able to do a comparison between the first three quarters of 2023, which would have been still on the quarterly cadence, and then the first three quarters of this year, which then would be a side-by-side comparison. And it turns out that on an annualized basis, there's going to be about an $8,000 difference more expensive. Then my friend said to me, well, but that's just the cost of postage. And so I assume that there's a, an entity that the city is contracting with to prepare these bills and send them out, and I'd like to know how much that is too. And so I started looking and figured I could probably find it in the bills, the monthly bills to pay. And there was this entry for mailing service, which is called Data Center. It's on the first page of the bills for approval, and it's 1,02204. And so I contacted Nina again, and I said, is this something that is in addition to the $8,000 that we talked about? And she said, told me that, no, Data Center is the service that the city uses, and they print the bills, they stuff the envelopes, they send them out with the postage on them, and the total cost per month is 1,022, depending on whether there's other things, inserts to go in. So I learned something new from this process. I passed it on to my friend, who then knows that the total cost, including the service involved, the difference is about $8,000.
Okay, thank you very much.
Comment, I might make one a comment, and Leila, your input as well. From what I understand, even though the expenses are more for monthly from postage, from an administrative standpoint, the process is much easier and less staff time to process the bill. Is that correct?
It is, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it's good when we get questions like that to just deal with them directly. It's, and often, I mean, we are not charged with understanding every detail of how the city does all of its processes. That's the job of the city manager, that's the job of her staff. I more often than not answer questions with, you know, I don't know, we're going to have to go, have to go find that out. So it's good to get answers specifically to something that's relevant, and we have a referendum related to it. And speaking of which, I promised everybody, starting some months ago, that after some requests, that I would break out the fees for Miller-Nash, our legal representatives, for the month. So I've got a couple of numbers to share there. Totals this month for the month of September only, we're about 12. I'm not going to do the dollars and cents, I'm going to do some slight rounding. I hope everybody is okay with that. It's just quite, not quite $13,000. 8,000 of that were general matters, which is what we've talked about in the past, contracts, personnel-related things that have to be, that have to go by legal and things of that nature. So 8,000 was that. For the month of September, the referendum and initiative that we've been talking, initiative we've been talking about, that was about $1,600. And the lawsuit currently pending in Tillamook County for the disclosure of the investigation, last, this last month was about $3,200. In addition, I want to give you just the total, running totals for the referendum and the investigation. So as of the end of September, the legal bill to deal, dealing with the referendum and everything that had to be done to do that properly was supposed to $22,000.
Transparency.
And the cost of the investigation disclosure lawsuit is running about $11,500. So for the people who are interested in that detail, there it is. Okay, so. Now, on to item four, and our city manager, Leila Mans, is going to give us her report. So Leila, go right ahead.
Mayor, I have a handful of things today. So I first want to start with something I should have mentioned last month, which is we got our preliminary audit findings, and we had a stellar audit. And, yeah. And that is directed to our accounting manager, Nina Christ, who just nailed it this year. In fact, the auditor said to me, we didn't even have any journal entry changes, which is like, from an auditing standpoint, a big deal. And that really, I think, shows just how good Nina is at her job. And I'll have to say, just personally, watching her prepare for the audit this year was the first time that there wasn't a ton of extra hours put in. She was, and not to say that the years before, she wasn't super organized. It was just a lot more complicated, and there's a number of reasons for that. But she just did an extraordinary job this year, what I would expect from Nina, in terms of the quality of work that she does for this community and for the city. So we'll have the final audit report. I'm expecting that that, we present that annually. Usually the council, I think it will be in December, is what we're aiming for. We'll get the draft audit report in the next few weeks. But it just was an extraordinary achievement, and I kick myself for not mentioning it last month, but I did want to acknowledge Nina. It's a lot of work, and it's in fact, one of the most important financial transparency documents that the city is responsible for. So I'm very pleased with that. And there's a lot of folks whose work goes into that, right? Like our short-term rental, staff, our water utility billing, all of these things feed into, into this audit. And Nina's done an outstanding job, both training and supporting staff to ensure that those records are clean and clear and consistent, and it just, it just really paid off. Our auditor was just smiling ear to ear. So, so I want to congratulate Nina and thank her for that. We're still trucking forward on Classic Street. We have an action tonight that we can talk more about when we get there, but we are in the process of negotiating a contract with an engineering firm to get started on that design work. So we're very excited about that, and I hope to have more for council, hopefully contracts to be approved shortly. So that's taking some time. And I'll talk about this too, a little bit later. In fact, it was an item that was added at the end of the agenda. But we are going to see sort of a monumental shift in staffing. I want to take a moment and acknowledge that Dan Weitzel will be leaving the city as a full-time employee. I'll talk more about what that little nuance means at the end of the meeting, but Dan has accepted a position as a fire captain within the Haylen Bay Fire District. If anyone knows Dan, you know that that's like, it's a dream come true for Dan. I would also say that Chief Knight's a lucky, lucky man, because Dan is really, has been an outstanding partner, friend, and support for me since I've come here, and is just a well-known, well-respected, deeply appreciated member of our community. And so I'm gratified that he'll still be within our community. And I'll talk a little bit later about some of the technical logistics around that shift. Dan will actually stay on. We're just going to keep our hooks in him for a little bit longer. Stay on, assuming council approves some actions at the end of the meeting as a, an hourly employee for the city until we get that position filled. And I am going to be appointing our new operations manager as the interim public works director. That'll be effective November 1st, and he will be working with Dan to sort of transition into that role. Rick has several years of experience with the city of Warranton and is ready to step up and step into that job. And so feel very fortunate that we got him when we did. We didn't know this was coming, and I think Dan told me that if it wasn't for this, you know, dream job, he would still be here with us. So I'm going to miss him a great deal, but knowing Dan, we'll, we'll see him. And I've also required that he help plan the Christmas tree party. So that's just a lifelong request that he promised that he would do. So I'm saying it publicly, so you're stuck with it, Dan. You're good. Yeah, so I know we'll all, I know you all join me in congratulating Dan, and I know I'll miss him deeply. I have a couple more things I wanted to just get to, and if I may, I'm going to share. Oh, first, I'll just give you an update too on City Hall. City Hall construction is moving along on schedule. You probably noticed that the walls have gone up really quickly, and this should be expected by the care and attention that went into laying the groundwork for that. I know there's a lot of folks who are like, what are they doing? And what they were doing was being very precise about laying the floor plates, so that when those walls went up, they just went up. So that's moving along pretty quickly. We're expecting trusses to be delivered sometime next week, and the temporary roof should be on by the end of the month. And then the final roof will be installed by mid-November. Once the structure is covered and the wall ends are built, that'll come last. The crew will begin wrapping the building, and then later setting windows, and then we'll get to full dry-in. So that's great timing. So they'll also start working on the interior walls, which will be easier, will be more comfortable and safer when it's undercover. By mid-December, the building should be dried and framing should be complete, and then we start to roughen for the mechanical, the electrical, and the plumbing, which is super exciting. We've also, you know, once you start a project on construction, it doesn't end. We have weekly owner, architect, contractor meetings. Lots of decisions are being made. One of the decisions will be, several decisions that have made that have culminated into our GMP amendment that's being proposed tonight for council is one of those. But our subcontractors have been really proactive in identifying wrong lead items. So like electrical items sometimes take six months to get delivered. So we've been able to get all of that stuff that will help prevent future delays. Finished decisions have been made, so I brought the finish board for anyone that might want to look. I was showing it earlier. It's going to be really beautiful on the interior. Budget is in hand. We've had some additions, some improvements. It's been really great working with Cove Built. They're really, I think their experience on the coast has really contributed to our ability to make changes that adapt to our local environment, and architect, and them have been working really well together. The solar generation system has been designed, it's currently out to bid. So you'll probably see another GMP amendment next month that will be for that specific item. And then when we get to the GMP amendment, Jesse is actually going to join us and walk us through that. We can talk about what is done. But we're well within budget, so even with the amendment tonight, those are just shifting of contingency that we hold for this purpose. So we're still within budget, and we still maintain a healthy contingency, and we are still on schedule. So I want to congratulate the team. They're just knocking it out of the park, and it makes my job and life a lot easier when that happens. So just a couple more things. There's just so much going on right now.
Just take your time. There's no need to rush this.
Thank you. So I want to share the city's website, because that's where the rest of my announcements come from. Okay. So there's a couple of things happening here. First, I'm going to say Josh designs all our posters. I don't know if you know that, but they're awesome. So we have kind of the conversations with counselors, which are ongoing, and that's been on the website. And then we also have coming up our community summit. So this is our first comprehensive plan workshop that we'll be doing in person. There's going to be a map activity as part of that. So we're going to livestream and then record the presentation, but the map activity won't be able to be done virtually. But we did want folks to be able to kind of see and listen and hear what was discussed. And so we're hoping to get a really solid turnout to that meeting. We've asked for an e-vite because we want to make sure we can account for the number of people that will be here. So please come. This will be focused on housing in particular. And so it's really, really, I mean, they're all really, really important, but this is really, really important. It's the evening time to come to that event. That'll be from 5:30 to 7:30 PM here at the Pine Grove on Monday, the 28th of October. And Cody will be here in person. Excited about that. And just to remind folks, the comprehensive plan website, if you click here, it will take you to the website, and that's where we have all the information about the project, all the background materials, access to all the meetings, so on and so forth. We also have, and this little window's in the way, I wonder, can you move it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a community conversation survey, and Linda Kessner, who's sort of chairing our committee, our Public Advisory Steering Committee, will be at the work session next week to talk a little bit more about what the PASC is doing. But this is actually an idea that came to the, from, to staff from the PASC, which is to, those folks are going out and meeting with folks throughout the community and getting feedback. And they said, why don't you put this on a survey? And we're like, yeah, it's a great idea. So now you can come and take the survey as an individual and provide your input. So we'll leave this up for a while, until we start to see things trickle down. But we hope that everyone takes a moment and fill that out, because that will help both inform all of the land use planning goals, and then also help set us a vision for our plan. Just some information on.
Can I break in for just a second?
You may. I was on a roll, Tom.
Okay, well, sorry. But so as far as the survey is concerned, you know, my other hat that I wear is the director of the museum. And Connie Burton reached out and wanted to come and address our board and have the survey conducted there. And I said to her, I said, well, you know, there's only two of us that are actually City of Manzanita residents. And she said, that's just fine, because the survey is intended to reach out to everybody that we consider stakeholders. And so just before we passed on that, to let people know, you don't have to live inside the city of Manzanita to have your voice heard.
Yeah, thank you for making that point. That's super important, because I consider this my community, and I don't rely on the boundaries. There are people who come here and go to our, you know, visit our businesses, go to the beach, you know. Stakeholders really do extend to our, our regional, but also our local kind of community out here. So everyone is welcome. Your feedback is valued, and it's important. So thanks for making that point. Totally true. We've gotten some questions about the water rate study and FAQ, and then the ballot measure. So sort of some just fact-based information is up on the website if you're interested. Oh, the other update I had about was about the Nahalen Bay State Parks. So their bidding process is now complete. They were within budget. So they're going to proceed with the road work, utility work, and the staff housing. And so that's great. I know from having to put projects out to bid, how nerve-wracking that is. So they are in the contracting phase. I also know how long that can take. But they expect to be done with that and start work in November. So the campground will be closing November 1st, and then the boat ramp will be closing December 1st. Just for ease, for folks, we've retained this button here. So if you click on that, it'll take you to their webpage, which has the most recent information. And we'll leave this up here as long as we can, but if we start getting stuff that competes with it, it might fall off. But you can always go to their website. And then finally, we have our logo. We talked about this a couple of meetings ago. So if you click here, and Josh helped put this together, you can go and vote on the bird. I don't know if anybody watched Portland. So he said, put a bird on it. So you can click on any one of these. I've already voted, so I'm not going to do it again. Please just vote once. And choose which one you like, and then you hit submit. And then we will record that, and then I'll bring those findings back to city council, and that is how we will select our logo. And that's what I got.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks for the question. Any questions for Leila? All right, let's, let's welcome then Mary Faith Bell. Come on up, Mary Faith. So as I said before, Mary Faith is one of our excellent Tillamook County Commissioners. There is some work afoot within the county and led by the board around transient lodging taxes. Well, you'd think that would just strip off my, perhaps, as often as we have to talk about it. But you're here to give us an update and start to give us an early view of some, something that you hope may be on the ballot come, come May. Not this ballot, but the, the next, 2025. It's all yours, Mary Faith.
Correct. Thank you. Well, thanks for inviting me. Thanks to Leila for inviting me. And it's ideal that I'm here at the same night as Nan, because these topics, this was brilliant of you, really. Because, yeah, because these topics dovetail perfectly. So I do, I am going to talk to you about TLT. But first, I want to tell you a fun story. This is the second night in a row I've been here in the Pine Grove. And, and I didn't see any of you here last night, so I want to tell you what we were doing. I had the privilege of being a judge for something like the, like a Shark Tank. So the Economic Development Council of Tillamook County has this program that's funded by the Ford Family Foundation that's called Level Up, and it's to encourage entrepreneurship. And so they've developed this program that's sort of like Shark Tank. And there were eight people, eight businesses here last night, making a Shark Tank sort of presentation to us. And it was just wonderful. So I just, I just wanted to share it with you, because it was so great. It was so great to see their enthusiasm and their passion, and some of them had done a lot of homework. They'd done business plans, and they'd gone through the Small Business Development Center classes, and they had budgets, and, and they had these fabulous visions. And some of them were established businesses that want to grow, and some of them don't, their business doesn't even exist yet, and they want to launch. And I was so very encouraged for our community. It was really lovely. And we only got to, we had to choose the top three. So that was hard, because there were, there were more than three great proposals. But it was really, it was just wonderful, and I was really heartened. It was, I wish you all could have been there, because it was very heartening. So thanks for listening to me tell you that.
Sure.
And this was the ideal venue for it. I was so grateful that, that they could have it here, because it was really just perfect. So TLT, we, the Tillamook County Commissioners are considering raising TLT tax, transient lodging tax. It is currently, county-wide, it's currently 10%, and, and we're considering going to the voters in May of 2025. And the, we haven't decided on a number yet, but, but we're thinking about 15%. And so 15% is, is compared to other counties, it, it's a little bit higher than most other comparators. Nan helped us with comparators. But we know that some, some other cities and counties are also in this process, considering going up. And for example, Lincoln County, Lincoln City, and Newport, I think, are all at 12%. Portland is very high with the, the various taxes, like the Tourism Investment District and the city TLT, et cetera. Portland is way over 20%. It might be 24. It's hot. High. So, so 15 is a little higher than our comparators, but we, we think that it's probably not higher for long. We think this is, this is a trend that's happening. And so, so the idea about it is that there are, as I'm sure you all know, with the TLT, 70% of it has to be reinvested in tourism promotion or facilities. And the county contracts with Nan and her organization, Tillamook Coast Visitors Association, to do, to do that work for us, and she does it brilliantly. And we also invest a lot of it into tourism facilities. And so, so that's great. So there's, there's a tremendous opportunity to use that 70% to reinvest it into the community. And, and it doesn't, I understand that not every, not every community reinvests so much of their TLT tax, the 70% back into the community as, as Tillamook County does, but we do. And it has been the, it has been the intention for, for 10 years, for the money to be spent that way, and it's really well-spent. And so there are a lot of great opportunities with that. For example, we heard from the board members and community members from NCRD recently about their need for the pool. And, and, you know, we would love to have more TLT to be able to invest in tourism facilities like the pool. So, so there's a lot of. So, so there's a lot of, there, you know, we have years of projects that we could work on. There's a, there's a fabulous list of facilities that Dan Hag did for us and the facilities, we did an inventory of what we have and what we need. And, and that's a tremendous list, things that, you know, because we, there's, with more people coming here, there's so much that we, that we want, we want to be ready for people when they come here. And so, so anyway, there's a tremendous opportunity with the seventy percent. Then with the thirty percent, the municipalities have the option of spending that as they will. So with our current T L T, we spend the entire thirty percent on roads. And that was a commitment that was made by the commissioners ten years ago when uh, T L T was passed. It was how, how they sold it to the voters. They said, you know, if you pass this T L T tax, we promise you, because at the time Tillamook County had the worst roads in the state raided, like it was a fact. And um, so they said, we'll, we promise we'll spend the whole thirty percent on the roads department. And, and, and we do, and now it's over one third of their budget. And we don't, you know, we're, our roads now are somewhere in the middle of that list, which is good. It's a vast improvement. So we'll, we'll continue to make the investment of the current T L T tax, the thirty percent on roads. We're not, we're not changing that at all. But the additional thirty percent, it's our intention to spend it on uh, public safety because there's so much, um, I'm glad that there, that there are law enforcement in the room tonight because there's so much uh, pressure on public safety that comes with the visitors who are coming here. And so, so our intention is to spend the thirty percent if we, if we go for this increase and the voters pass it, to spend the thirty percent of public safety. And probably for us, that would be uh, eighty percent of it would go toward the sheriff's office and ten percent uh, to um, emergency management and maybe ten percent for the maintenance of the radio bond system. So, but all of those are, you know, those are just numbers we're talking about. We haven't decided those things finally. So how all this affects you is that when Tillamook County passed in twenty fourteen, passed the T L T, the ten percent countywide, yours is nine and then the, the cities pay one percent to the county. So if we go countywide to fifteen percent, then yours would still be nine. If you don't go up also, yours would still be nine and the six percent would come to the county. But that's not our intention. Our intention is that the high tide rises all boats, that, that the county can't be the only organization that needs more revenue. So our anticipation is that cities would go up with us. It's our hope that cities would go up with us and we would continue to collect the one percent from cities. So the one percent um, for us, you know, will rise because you're, what you collect will rise. And so, so my point is, we don't want the six percent. What, and ideally, we, we would like to move forward in cooperation with all the cities. We would love to, for everyone to be, to agree that this is a good idea and it benefits all of us. And so where we're at in the process right now is I'm talking to cities about it. When we've talked to all the cities about it, then we'll start a a user group like with some uh, short term rental owners, et cetera, and um, the business, you know, the chambers, we'll start, we'll start talking to some user groups. It's not, it's not our um, intention to, for, for any owners to be uh, to be burdened by this because the, our assumption is that, that the increase in tax would simply be paid by the visitors. So um, I think I can stop there. Do you have questions?
Many, obviously this is early days.
Yes.
Any questions or comments, feedback from council, Mary Faith?
So Mary Faith, how far along are you in the process and when do you have to make a decision to be, you want to be on the May ballot?
On a May ballot? That's a great question, Jerry. I don't remember the exact date. We have a timeline um, by which we would need to get it on the May ballot and I think it's, it's after the first of the year.
Okay, um, and what would your, how would you, how would the commissioners respond to uh, a handful of the communities not wanting to go along?
We have a couple of options. One is um, that we could potentially go and reverse the current countywide T L T. What we can't do, we've learned from legal counsel that what we cannot do is um, is pick and choose. So we can't say we're going to raise it except for these cities. So um, so either we go, we go across the county and increase the current tax or there's the option that we could potentially rescind the current tax and, and go out for a new tax that would just be in unincorporated Tillamook County. So that's one possibility. We haven't, we haven't fully explored it. Like is that, yeah, it's more complicated.
It's March twentieth.
Thank you.
Last data file.
Appreciate it.
I'm almost certain.
Uh, my, so my hesitation is if, if this were a Manzanita only proposal, uh, obviously there's a lot to study and a lot to consider, but my initial instinct would be not to favor uh, an increase in our own T L T tax rate uh, until we've exhausted uh, other opportunities for increased revenue. The way you've presented it, it, it uh, it doesn't take away our authority to make our own decisions, but it does influence our decision making and I, I get that. And I'm, I'm just uh, because I think uh, the, the thoughts in my head may be shared by some others in the community. I just want to make sure we have an opportunity between now and March to sort of air this out and make sure we know what we're signing on to here. So um, I appreciate this. You're coming to us. You must be going to the other cities. Is there going to be maybe an opportunity to get all of us together in the same room to talk about it or?
Absolutely. We don't have that meeting planned yet. We started with a meeting like that, which Mayor Stock and Leila and Linda Koslowski came. Um, so yes, absolutely. We'll do that again.
I have a question.
Yep.
So um, Mary Faith, um, I know Jerry's been working really hard on trying to um, work through uh, a way for the city to um, achieve income diversification. And um, our budget relies in large part on the T L T that we assess. Um, and I kind of feel like you're, if, if this happens, then we would be in a position where it would be ridiculous for us not to take advantage of the opportunity to increase it as well. And it would make us more reliant on T L T funds than less reliant. Um, and that's a concern that I have because I hate to lose the momentum towards uh, revenue diversification. Um, I don't know that I'm asking you a question as much as maybe you can give me insights about what you think about that.
Well, I, I would encourage you to continue, to continue that work, the revenue diversification. We are, we've just completed a strategic plan and we're working with uh, with a consultant who today we had a lengthy budget workshop meeting and um, and we're gonna, we're going to uh, use a financial consultant to help us come up with a plan exactly like that to a revenue diversification plan because the county is dependent on timber revenue. And for the general fund, we have lots of departments that are very solvent and stable, but, but the general fund is dependent on timber, timber revenue, which is um, unstable and likely to decline. So, so we're in that position also that we need to figure out uh, what, what are our options and to, to move, to move ahead, you know, the, the, the time when uh, government could be, at least local government, could be dependent on timber revenue and just wait for it to come in is, that's behind us. So, so we need to do different things. So I would encourage you to continue to do different things, even if uh, this, this tax goes up.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Um, you've met with other cities and communities to talk about this. What is the general reaction then, any different than what you've received from the council here in Manzanita? Similar? Need to think about it? Let's do it?
The, the other cities that I've met with that are supportive and um, and folks have had very thoughtful questions like you. And um, I, I got one very interesting question about could some of the money be used to support fire districts, which was fascinating um, because we, we all care about fire districts and, and we all know that, that a lot of our fire districts are underfunded. But they're special districts and they're not funded by the county. And so we talked about that. We dug into that a little bit and, and we don't really see how that would work. Um, but it was a great question because the question was about public safety. And um, so, so in answer to your question, all the cities I've talked to so far have been supportive and people do have concerns. You know, they have concerns about, about um, how short term rental owners will feel about it, which is the most reasonable concern. And so um, so far, everyone has encouraged us to continue to explore it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another question. Um, is part of the problem um, the state law that restricts the use of the T L T funds as opposed to the rate being too low?
That, yes. So there, we make very good use of the seventy percent, you know, with thanks to Nan largely. Um, but yes, if there were, if, if it were fifty fifty, it would probably work a lot better for us. But um, we've, yeah, it, um, and I think there, there have been attempts made at the legislature to change the, the seventy thirty split and um, and I don't, I think people will continue to try that. Uh, and there is more, there's more evidence now about how communities are impacted, uh, communities like ours are impacted uh, by tourism and um, as opposed to other places in the, in the state. So recently I heard, I heard a good suggestion that uh, maybe we could, there, we could come up with some kind of legislation about changing the seventy thirty split to fifty fifty if uh, just for smaller rural counties that are disproportionately impacted by tourism. That makes sense to me because maybe they don't need to change it in other places. Um, but you know, we know that, that in Tillamook County, we have twenty seven thousand residents and that's how the, the sheriff's office is funded for twenty seven thousand residents and not for the hundred thousand that are often here on the weekends. So um, so yes, and also we've met a couple of times now with Jason Brant, who's the executive director of the Oregon Restaurant Lodging Association. And he was very uh, helpful, pleasant to talk to. He drove out to Tillamook. We've met with him a couple of times. Uh, he was encouraged that we, that we wanted to do this in tandem with O R L A and, and also with the cities. And um, and so we talked about all different possibilities. He said, you know, if you go to the voters and the voters pass it, there's very little that anybody could do about that. That, yeah, that's very, that's not likely to be challenged. Um, but he said also that the, that O R L A will absolutely fight to their last breath, changing the seventy thirty split. So um, so there's that battle.
Of course they would fight till their very last breath about applying a uh, sales tax to prepared foods and other ways to diversify income like that.
Did they fight that in Cannon Beach? I don't know. Did they?
Okay. I think, uh, I mean, the seventy thirty split, I, I get that that's, you know, religion to the uh, restaurant association folks or hotel folks, but what's been encouraging is that uh, in the last couple of years, it seems like we've had a little bit more of a creative view on what fits in like seventy percent. And so, so when you started your presentation, you made a pretty compelling pitch for the county actually needing that seventy percent money. I would say in Manzanita uh, we're less excited about the seventy percent money. We'd, we'd probably be very grateful for the thirty percent money. Uh, so since we can't get the seventy percent money to look more like thirty percent money, um, the more we can continue to push the envelope on how seventy percent money can be used, the more um, the more I could see, see us signing on with uh, with the county. But I, I just think that's an area that we need to know more about, understand more about and, and talk more about. I mean, we, you know, we can have all the tourists in the world come to Manzanita, but if we don't have waiters and waitresses and, and housekeepers and, and you know, folks working at the golf course or whatever to take care of them because they can't live here, uh, then, you know, that doesn't really serve the interest of tourist promotion. We have to be able to address that livability issues that make it difficult to provide a, a uh, tourism based economy workforce and you know, so I'm hoping that uh, our friend Jason uh, can work with us.
So for people who are immersed in this and talk about this at their kitchen tables every night, you want to take another minute to just remind everybody of what the seventy percent goes to and what the thirty percent goes to for the county, just to make sure we're clear on that?
For the county.
I said, you know, there are, it's probably just a minority of people who aren't doing that every night at their dinner table.
Excellent point. Thank you. For the county, the seventy percent is, has to be by, by Oregon law, has to be spent on tourism promotion or facilities. And so um, there's, we have made very good use of the seventy percent doing mostly tourism facilities, but also destination, um, destination management. So I, I, when Nan comes up, she's the expert in this. And in fact, she's developed a model that people are using now all over the country. So I'll ask her to talk a little bit about this when she comes up, but, but the intention of it is, is to um, to build uh, to build the community in, in a way that is, that is um, beneficial to people who live here as well as to people who visit here and uh, to protect our assets and to um, to take care of our resources. So it's not straight, it's not straight promotion. It's not like heads and beds promotion.
That's the shift that Jerry's really mentioned because I remember that being very tightly defined and then it got more, well,
Yes.
it got broader, which then in effect included many more of the people living in the communities who were affected and could use the, like trails, for example.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and facilities, you know, to be able to invest in tourism facilities like a bathroom in your new city hall, that's, that's supported with, at, at least in part, T L T funds. So uh, but all kinds of uh, um, tourism facilities all over the county. And so that's been, that's been a pleasure to make those investments. But the thirty percent is at the discretion of the, of the taxing government. So we can use the thirty percent on whatever we want and we use it on the roads department, period. Like, you know, it's sacred. So um, however, I think I understand that Manzanitas has had the T L T tax for a longer time. And so I think you have more discretion. So you have more discretion in the T L T tax you collect now, but you probably wouldn't with an, with an in- increase.
Yeah, ours, we have a, so we have nine percent. And then S T R owners pay one percent to the county. Of our nine percent, seven percent of that, we get to keep a hundred percent of that goes to the general fund because we levied that tax prior to the new, to the law that went into effect that did the seventy thirty split. So two percent of our nine percent is subject to the, to that. And T L T is the lifeblood of our community, like in terms of our city government. Without it, you would maybe have an administrator and a water district.
Hmm, yeah. And so just to maybe summarize then, so as you're talking about this proposal um, that the county is, is looking at, the thirty percent that was sacred to roads, which was how you got um, understandably, people pleased to vote for it, um, because the roads were such an issue. You're saying that stays in place, but for the, whatever the increase ends up being, that that thirty percent will be law enforcement oriented. At least that's how we're looking at it right now. Yeah, okay. Which makes sense. And I think, you know, and it's another area where we're different, um, than most of the cities on the coast because we have our own police force that is funded out of the general fund, um, indirectly through, you know, the, the taxes that we collect from that. So, but I understand that could be a, I would imagine that could be a stronger sell on some of the other communities in North County that are further away from Tillamook, have concerns about the distance between Tillamook and here and don't have their, um, don't have a dedicated police force. So, okay, good. So, uh, I'm assuming you, as always, you're, you're open and available for any questions that come afterwards. And we keep, keeping us informed of any public meetings. And if there are opportunities for citizens to apply to be on a working group or whatever, that we'll get notice of that. And so people way up here north in our neck of the woods, uh, your neck of the woods too, I know, um, can participate.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mary Faith. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah.
For inviting us.
Yeah.
Let's stay and listen to Nick.
Okay. What a segue. Are you ready to go, Nan? Okay. So Nan, uh, who may ad lib it a little bit because we've just had this conversation. However, you want to fit into that is just fine, but the, the primary thing is to talk about the, um, off-season tour, tourism grants and the kickoff for that.
Yes.
Yes.
Can do that. Want to do that first and then if you have any other questions.
Yeah.
Whoever you see fit, Anne. All right. That'll be great. Um, and by the way, I, I will say, I really, I support this, uh, raise in T L T. Um, what you can do with that 70% is quite broad. And always, um, I, I was in the last, uh, couple of months, I've been working on consolidating all of the studies that we have done over 10 years of what people want from the community. And there was the first, the asset mapping that started in 2014 that did a thorough review of what was needed in the county. In 2017, we did a series of, I think, 12, 16 meetings, something like that with the communities about, okay, now you've seen what we can do with this money. What else would you like to do? And then we started doing the community planning ones, uh, which we did here in Manzanita in 2023. And we've done with seven communities so far. And then Dan Hague on our staff did a series of, um, outdoor recreation planning facilities. So all of those studies have gone into this consolidated report. A lot of things have been done and a lot of things are underway, but there is still a wish list that is, it's amazing, the commonalities that people want throughout the whole county. And, um, I'll be doing, I'm going to finish up a report and get that to the county, but we can share that with you when it's done. But it's a lot of things that are going to, that support the community. Yes, they will help the visitors. It gives the visitor something to do too. But they are really based on community-based, it's community-based tourism that is, that is coming out of all of these plans. So I'm really happy about that and it's what the 70% can do. So it's really good. Um, so about the, about the, um, um, Manzanita off-season marketing grants, I first want to give a little wrap up of this, this current year. Everyone has finished except one business. So there was, uh, the winery at Manzanita right next door here. They had, they finished theirs and they have already applied for the new one. They applied on a, the evening of October 1st, when they first opened. Uh, the Hoffman Center, uh, completed theirs. It was a new branding and three-year strategic plan. They finished that. Oregon Beach Connections, which is, um, Carolyn Greenwood's company. And they did off-season wedding promotions and they found that 90% of the inquiries came from people from out of state that wanted to come to Manzanita and have a wedding here, which is great. And then they also did a contest, uh, of a giveaway of a, of an elopement, beach elopement.
I remember that council meeting.
And that's happening November 11th. And as soon as, uh, uh, that happens, she's going to send in a report. I'll have a report on all of these that I will send you. Uh, the Lauren Halum Community Trust held two events, a biennial estuary cleanup in March. And then they did a migratory bird day. And they had quite a lot of people come for that and stay. The Center Point Healing did, um, a sand spiral labyrinth on labyrinth day, which is the first Saturday or first day in May. And they had quite a few people in labyrinths or becoming very popular on the Oregon coast. A lot of people show up for those events. And then the restaurant Yoke, uh, is doing a brand, new branding and website. And they are not quite done, but I've let them know that they still have some time to finish. So, um, that was that year of this current year and everybody's been reimbursed except Yoke, that's not quite finished. Um, and now these just opened, uh, the new ones just opened October 1st. And we're using a brand new grant management software that is much easier and much more transparent. And, um, easier for us and easier for reviewers to, to get into the system and see things. And, um, so it's $20,000, of course, and with a $2,000 maximum ask. We also sent out emails to every business in Manzanita. And said, you know, this is a year when the Halum Bay State Park is going to be closed. And I've already talked to several businesses here and they're concerned about how this is going to impact their off-season business. Um, the restaurants in particular, because they do get a lot of customers in the off-season from the Halum Bay. So I encouraged them all, we sent them a flyer and we'll send another one at the end of the month. And I'll reminder, and I'm also encouraging if they want to do larger projects, that they can apply for this grant and then also apply for our, um, T C P A marketing grant, which is up to 5,000 and that they collaborate as businesses and do a larger social media or campaign or videos or something that will get people here in the off-season. Um, so that's what we are. And then the tourism facilities grant also, um, opened on October 1st. Uh, the county has, um, it's a $400,000 fund. You can ask for 7, up to $75,000. I've also, we have some leftover monies from last fiscal year that we are going to check out at the end of December and still, and see if there's still that amount left. And we're going to take that and put it towards the facilities grant. So more money will be available for the facilities grants. Any questions?
To you, what is the deadline? It opened October 1st. Submissions must be completed.
For the mark, for the marketing grant, um, or the facility, the facilities grant deadline is, uh, December 15th. The marketing grants, uh, both of them are December 1st.
And if a business inquired, how do I apply for this? Where do they go? What website or?
So you go, yeah, we put that in the flyer and it's on the, um, in the press release as well. But you go to tillamocoast.com/grants. And you will see tabs for facilities, the T C P A marketing grant and the Manzanita grant. And they just, you just click on the Manzanita grant and it'll take you right through how to get in and create an account in the new software. And then you do everything online. You don't have to download fillable PDF and do all that. Then scan it and send it back in. You don't have to do any of that anymore. You do it all right online. Any other questions? Good. Thanks for Nan very much.
Oh, but before Nan leaves the table, you know, Nan happens to also be the, uh, president of the Nahalum Valley Historical Society.
That seems to be a group I've heard about.
Oh, yeah. Well, somehow or another, I keep bringing it up. Um, and we, uh, published our first print newsletter, uh, for this quarter. And so we're hoping that we're going to find additional funding so that we can do this as a quarterly thing. But this is essentially Nan's work. Um, and so it's always a pleasure to work with Nan. And, um, I brought a few of them up for the table in case any of you who aren't members and should be, um, don't have one.
Mine now.
All right. Fair enough. Thank you, Nan.
Thanks for all your work, Nan. Nan has more than one hat on in the community, that's for sure.
Yeah.
So thank you for coming tonight. Okay. So now we're going to move to that, you know, it's not such a nice name, old business, but there are some valuable things in there that we're going to do. Thanks. Safe, safe home. Uh, the first thing we're going to talk about here is the planning commission, uh, commissioner update process, because we've got some openings. Tom's our commissioner, commissioner or counselor, get the name right, counselor, who's going to be working with, uh, Karen Reddick-Yurka on that. So you've got an update for the group?
I do. Is Cody gonna be the?
Yeah, Cody's here. He's probably great. Get his camera on and getting ready.
There you go.
Hi, Cody.
So before he starts, yeah, and I'm just going to say it's been a real pleasure working with him. Really interested to hear what, what I, what I have for input and then picks it up and works on it right away. So.
Great.
Take it away, Cody.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mayor and counselors. Um, am I able to share my screen? Let's see.
No, not yet.
We will allow it. Just a moment.
Should be able to now, Cody.
Um, it's trying.
Your, your cat is joining you in the struggle there.
Sorry, I'm still loading.
I can run it too on my end if that's easier. Just let me know.
Yeah, my Zoom wants to go down now, so. Yeah, let me try and get out.
Do we still have windows?
That I might need to, um, it's, it's wanting to boot me out of Zoom. Um, but it won't let me go any further, so I might need to, to go out and come right back in.
Okay, I can open it up for you on my end, Cody.
That, that, that might be what we have to do.
All right. Here, stand by.
Oh, yeah.
Of course. This first presentation, we just wanted to make it really difficult for him.
Is Cody frozen or just incredibly good at holding our castle expression? There we go.
That's weird.
Yeah. He's got a twin.
Cool. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Sorry about that. Um, so I'll be presenting on the selection committee process timeline. Um, regarding the appointment for three open planning commission positions. Um, they'll serve four-year terms and this, uh, will be filled in December. Um, this timeline on the next slide.
Trying to get it.
Be based on the City of Manzanita Rules of Procedure for City Council Meetings, um, and specifically chapter eight. Um, so to start, the selection committee shall include, A, one member of city council, and that's Counselor Campbell. Um, B, a member of the existing committee, which is Karen Reddick-Yurka, um, who's the current chair of the planning commission. And then myself, C, Cody Acoin, um, as the designee of the city manager. Um, and this was all established last regular session on September 4th. Um, so the next slide.
Why? There's something hinky going on.
Microsoft jumped in Tuesday and yesterday.
Yeah. Sorry, Cody. It's not letting me turn it into presentation mode.
That's okay. Yeah. Uh, so at a regular session, which is, uh, uh, this session, council shall review and finalize criteria for the selection process. And the criteria are on the following slide. So the first four criteria, um, are reused from, um, uh, last selection committee. Um, the bottom two highlighted in yellow are new, so I'll just read those. So the applicant demonstrates ability to listen and communicate effectively in a group setting. And then the applicant confirms they have read chapter nine, Ethics Decorum, Outside Statements of the City of Manzanita Rules of Procedure for City Council Meetings. And because we added that criteria at the bottom, um, we also attached chapter nine to the application just for convenience. And we'll get to that in just one sec. Um, next slide, so using these criteria, the selection committee will write the application form. And I've just included the app on the following slide. Um, and just, um, noted where, um, any changes were made are, um, with those, uh, little red stars. Um, so you see that one on the left, so I'll just read these changes as well. There are three positions open on the planning commission. These positions will be for your appointments and will end December 2028. And then two more on the following slide. Um, there on the left, the deadline for submission is November 1, 2024 at 4:00 PM. Um, and then as I mentioned, um, just the attached chapter nine from the rules of procedure there on the right. Um, and then on the next slide there on the left. Um, and then for my last slide, the application will be posted on the city's website for at least three weeks. Um, so if we post tomorrow, October 10th, which is what we're planning on doing, um, three weeks from tomorrow will be the very last day of October, um, which would be a Thursday. Um, so just for convenience, we'll push that to Friday, November 1st at 4:00 PM. And then interviews will be held not that next week, but the week following, um, November 11th through the 15th. And then, um, actual appointments would take place, um, at the December 4th session. Um, and that's all I have for you. The, um, updated criteria, the updated application, um, which I included in the slide are also in the packet. Um, what I didn't include in the slides are the proposed, um, interview questions, but those are also in the packet.
We're good. Thanks, Cody.
So one thing that, uh, was a late addition to the packet was, um, when we changed, uh, rule nine, we added a, uh, paragraph four that also, uh, contained the, uh, uh, adoption of resolution 2022, um, into rule nine. And you see, um, in the most recent packet that got released this afternoon, we've decided to also place, um, the, the whole written out copy of resolution number 2022, so the applicants don't have to go out and search for it. Um, and, uh, so that'll be a part of the packet as well. Uh, this is kind of exciting, um, because this is, uh, a revision of our onboarding process now. Um, when we adopted this revision to rule nine, uh, we brought the committees into what previously only applied to council members. And so, uh, to make sure that all committee members had fair warning as they were coming on about what kind of conduct would be expected under rule nine and also resolution number 2022. Uh, we're going about this, uh, upfront before anybody gets appointed, that they can, they've read it and agree that they can abide by it. So, uh, I think it's an important first step, um, for all the committees. And, um, so I've got a little bit of excitement around that. Something I get to work on.
Add to that just really quickly. And one of the other things we're doing and Cody's helping with is we will actually be giving this to existing standing committee members and asking you folks to review, uh, chapter nine and to acknowledge that as well. So, so that everyone on all the existing committees are compliant with that.
Yeah. And just as a reminder, so chapter nine is ethics, decorum and outside statements. So that's something that everybody sitting up here had to review, sign and say that we would abide by. And then the resolution number 20-22 was a resolution condemning racism and encouraging a commitment to fair and equal treatment for all, um, which was adopted several years ago. Tom was, was a big help to us. Um, I don't remember how many months ago it was, but a little while ago, when we realized that it was probably time to, um, to step up our game with being clear with people, everybody who's serving on a city committee, who then becomes by extension, part of city government. Um, and so it's one of the number of, you know, a number of things we've been doing to kind of just be clear about what expectation should be. Um, and in particular, we had some good questions and got them worked out about when you're on a committee. It's true when you're on council, but also when you're on a committee. It's true when you're on council, but also when you're on a committee, how do you distinguish between when you're speaking for yourself? And when you're representing the city? So it does not prevent someone from representing themselves in a matter, but it does cause you to be aware that you have to be clear about that when you're making statements, particularly on social media, which we all know is a perfectly pristine place where everybody knows how to work well with each other. So Tom did help us a lot with getting that um, in place and Jerry did as well, so thank you both for that work. Okay? Anything else? So let's go, gonna get a lot of good applicants, right? That'll be the next step. Good applicants, and we have a couple of uh, current commissioners who are planning to reapply, so that's always a nice, a nice sign and those uh, those commissioners have an idea of the workload coming with the comprehensive plan, so that's always a good thing too. All right, anything else, Tom, on that?
Does this need to be approved?
Yes, I think it could. Yeah, yes, take a motion.
So would someone give me a motion to approve this then?
I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission applicant criteria as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm assuming Linda will be vocal if she's. I can't see you on the screen, Linda.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm listening.
I know you are somewhere. I know you are. Okay, great. Uh, thank you very much. Thank you, Cody.
Yeah, I think I just make a quick comment. I, I know we've talked about this before and I think we just need to put a bug in our ear about it again that, um, so these three positions, um, if, because they're gonna be uh, appointed in December. Theoretically, it, it, they could be three positions appointed by um, lame duck uh, counselors and then a new council will commit and inherit those three new position appointees, so it seems like an easy fix to get out of that. I'm not sure. Maybe it's not as easy as I would hope, but I think maybe we should look to uh, trying to change the, the timing uh, in the future. Not this right, this year it's not gonna be a problem, but theoretically it could be a problem.
We hope it's not gonna be a problem.
Yeah. But um, but it would be an odd situation, you know, just theoretically, if, if there were three new council members in January. And they were uh, immediately inheriting three brand new planning mission members appointed by three counselors who were voted out of office. That would be an odd occurrence and I think we can avoid that circumstance by changing the length of terms and beginning and ending dates of terms. So we don't have to do that now and, and, but I know we have discussed it briefly in the past or it came up uh, in the past, so I, I think we should put a pin there.
Okay, Leila, do you have a point of view on that? Just in logistics, timing? In addition to?
I want to, I want to think that a little more and.
Okay.
Counsel expectment, but thank you for asking.
Thank you. Okay, all right. So now we go to uh, item B of old business ordinance twenty four dash oh five. Reducing the speed limit to twenty miles per hour in residence districts within the City of Manzanita, so Sergeant Mike Sims is here for that. That's nice. Thank you.
Hello, hello. Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Council, staff, folks, Johnny. Okay, so uh, this is something that's been going on for a while. And we've had a few moving parts with the community and the T S P and Leila and Max and Cody's jumped in to help out, so thanks to all those folks, but uh. Anyways, uh, let me see, we've got a slideshow here, a quick history before we ask you to move forward with this. Um, we met back in September of twenty twenty three. We started discussions regarding twenty um, twenty is plenty. Uh, we also uh, had discussions and met in December twenty twenty three. Uh, where uh, council had asked staff to um, conduct a survey. Um, we had quite a bit of respondents and overwhelming um, amount of those respondents that were in favor of reducing that speed limit citywide, but we also met uh, June twelfth, twenty twenty four. Uh, and we'll get to those, uh, the findings, some of the stats from that survey in just a moment, but uh, June twenty twenty four presented the findings of legal authority, which allows us to legally make this change in a city and for that to happen, um. Uh, the law states that we must fit some, right, fill some criteria and we, we have a quick slide on that, but it's really just a reminder. So moving forward. Uh, regarding that survey that I mentioned, uh, two hundred and fifty-five respondents, eighty-one percent were um, uh, supporting that proposed speed reduction. Uh, some things to think about, um, uh, during that survey, um, we asked folks kind of maybe not problem areas, but concerning areas. And uh, something to note regarding those concerning areas that kind of lined up with the public was, with, with what they were thinking. As well as law enforcement, as well as the T S P plan, so um, it just, it was kind of obvious what areas needed those, uh, that attention first as far as reducing and signing those uh, uh, those areas. So moving along past the survey, this is that legal analysis I was talking about, this gives us the right as a city to change the law. The speed limit, uh, five miles an hour. If we fit this criteria, it's got to be located in a residential district. A, B and C there, uh, as long as it's not an arterial highway, I think in Manzanita, we, the closest we have is Highway one oh one, it's not even in our speed limits. And then, of course, um, if we want to enforce these areas, we have to sign them appropriately, and so we have plans with Public Works uh, to start that work as soon as we can move forward. Maybe after tonight, no month from tonight, so um, on that slideshow. Moving forward, the workload impact um, would be those labor hours to um, install those signs, to build and install those signs. We've had some, uh, already spent some labor hours on deciding where those signs would go. Um, again, that uh, decision comes from partly the uh, the survey as well as the T S P. Um, workload impact for Public Works and the Police Department has been as such. Uh, moving forward, there's going to be um, maybe some educational um, initiatives. Uh, it may cost a little bit of money to, to pu- put uh, some notices into some water bill inserts. Um, workload impact, it can happen during my shift. I'm happy to entertain any conversation about anything, but it would be great to talk about twenty is plenty with folks because even though we can reduce the speed limit citywide, can we enforce it citywide? And those are some, that's like the most popular question. And uh, we can enforce areas that are twenty miles an hour, uh, after the new reduction, as long as they're signed. So that's something that, that may be part of a discussion. Anyways, I'm happy to sit down, folks, and maybe in an organized fashion, coming up, we can schedule in. Linda, if you're listening, put me on the list. Other than that, workload impact is just the day-to-day operations. Once the signs are up, they're up, so. It, it's not too, we're not asking too much as of this point. The work's been done pretty much done.
The service lockdown. Oh, can I, can I jump in here? My, so one of the things, and this is also designed by Josh, just FYI, uh, so before we ask you to conduct a first reading, one of the things we'll have at the next city council meeting is have you been around in Portland where they have the twenty is plenty sort of yard signs? Those are not like Mike or John can't write a ticket on a street that has one, but they sure amount of deterrence uh, for folks, and so we'll have a bunch of those. We had a bunch of those made, so the community members can come to the meeting next month or at City Hall, pick one up and stick it in your yard. Uh, so we have three different kinds, all designed by Josh, and they're to help encourage and just kind of get the word out there that um, we mean business, we want you to slow down.
That is a good point. We can enforce the ones that we put the government posts, is your yards.
These signs that are on the thing and.
But we, I've heard that a lot and people have even asked me if, if I, if it's entrapment because I'm lowering the speed limit so that I can write more tickets. And we've heard, I've fielded a few questions similar, but that's not true as well.
Yeah, and we've had members of the community come and provide testimony sort of separate from our effort. We've been talking about this now, as Mike mentioned, for over a year. And I think it was Dennis Tong came and provided testimony a couple of times. We were like, oh, we're working on it. So Dennis, we're doing it now. Um, or at least we expect the council to in a moment. Um, so we have another first reading tonight, second reading next month, and then we have thirty days. Um, before it goes into effect and so Mike will be working with the Public Works staff to sort of have that ready to go.
Sort of taken those steps with anticipation.
Yeah, but we'll have the signs ready for folks and, you know, there's no harm in deterrence. It's a good thing.
Oh, and I'd say thank you to the people who um, have just simple signage up now. It's just a, it's just a reminder to pay attention. I think that's the thing that it accomplishes more than anything.
And the reminder of the reminder too, also, these signs are great for your yard and right up close to the, to the right of way, but if they creep into the yeah, if they creep up into the right of way, uh, the city will have to take measures. We already have uh, ordinances and, and things that talk about the right of way and the use of the right of way and, and uh, those uh, uses do not include the twenty is plenty personal signs. As tempting as it may be.
Okay, but there's room for them, just not in the city's right of way. Okay, very good. So since we're doing a first reading tonight, I'm presuming we're not going to read the entire thing in its entirety, or do, would you recommend?
No, we posted it a week in advance, so charter allows that you can read it by title only.
Okay, um, and so it'd be important then to see if we've got any community input from people here first and then check online. See if anybody has anything they'd like to add. Okay, thumbs up here. Not everybody can see that, thumbs up. Nobody who had any issues with personal uh, versus city right of ways or things like that? Okay, good. Do we have anybody online who wants to comment? Okay, we're good.
And if I could just add, I believe this is step one in making Manzanita the most walkable, bikeable city on the coast.
Yes. Yeah.
Just uh, comment, if any of you have noticed, and maybe this is to you as well, the sign that was in Hayrum with the radar sign. When, if this goes into place, I think it would be great to have that one or a couple around because I can tell you when I was going north coming home and somebody going south hit the sign, I was like the cops are after me. I'm not speeding, but it gets your attention, red and blue lights, uh.
Yes, I believe, I believe there's some room in there, not just for the fixed signs, but the, some radar signs as well, similar to the ones we have. I don't know if they have red and blue. But um, we'll, we'll take a look at uh, those options and I know Chief's working on that right now, so.
Awesome.
Okay, but we're gonna keep the radar sign on
Classic and Lenita and potentially some of the portable ones, maybe.
Yes, and the classic one may be a little funky because there's a project that's, yeah.
Yeah, well, we will hold off on installing any more signs on Classic because we do expect to close that road probably in February, so there's a big cost to putting those in, but those will be put in as part of that project. And there's a couple of other locations I think we identified um, for radar signs. And those are funded through the budget, the city council and the budget committee recommended approval of the budget last year, which includes funding to do all this work, so.
We talked about a variety of signs or maybe having some that say citywide speed limit, those are all decisions to be taken once the ordinance.
Yeah, first step is getting just the twenty and then the radar signs in, and then we'll talk a little more about some creative signage, which will take a little more homework on our side.
So if we do, which we are, not if, we've done the first reading tonight, we'll do the second reading and then presumably unless the, an issue comes up, we will be passing that um, next month. So that's November, so about when do you think, would you say citizens will be able to see the new signs and they'll be up and running? Do we have?
December.
December?
December.
Okay, very good. Okay? Anything else, Mike?
That's it for me.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for your diligence on this.
Do we actually need to read?
Uh, so what's the statement we need, Leila?
So you need to conduct a first reading by title only, so whoever makes that motion should read the full title of the ordinance.
I would move that the council approve Council Ordinance Number twenty twenty four, or I'm sorry, twenty four dash five. Which is an ordinance of the City of Manzanita, Oregon. Reducing the speed limit to twenty miles per hour in residence districts within the City of Manzanita.
Go to a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right, so first reading is accomplished. Thank you, everybody. Uh, next up is our sixth ordinance for twenty twenty four, ordinance twenty four oh six. Mending section one, section four B, section four I, section five A, section five B of ordinance ten dash oh three. Establishing rules and regulations relating to short-term rentals. So Leila, you're going to take us through a this is Leila Amon, city manager. Are you going to do that or is Scott gonna be here or?
Scott was, is on vacation.
Scott's on vacation?
Yes, hey, good for him, has his cage occasionally.
Okay.
He's enjoying himself. Um. So yeah, so this is a pretty straightforward ordinance. Uh, we are asking for what we kind of call housekeeping amendments to the ordinance. Um, what the four items we're asking for council to amend are the item related to the dark skies, so folks might remember the short-term rental ordinance implemented the first sort of step. Like dipping the toe in the water on dark skies, you know, Sergeant Sims worked on the adoption of uh, ordinance twenty four oh two earlier this year, which implemented that and expanded it citywide. So we want to make sure that there's consistency between ordinance ten oh three and ordinance uh, twenty four oh two, so we have just changed that to just eliminate the language that was in ten oh three and have it just directly reference twenty four oh two. And that, for example, if there maybe is some amendment or refinement to twenty four oh two, then it's just automatically connected to ten oh three, so it's an elegant way of doing this. Uh, the second two changes are related to um, the due date, so the due date for periodic reinspection. We want to change that to June first, uh, from July one, and then the change of the due date to September first for uh, renewals from August first. Uh, this is because of the impact that it has on staff, so we do all these renewals at the same time that we get quarterly statements. And then we're also now starting to do, uh, we do about, I think Scott said, between seventy to ninety inspections per year. So things always stack up towards the end and um, this was a recommendation that came from the staff that I, I wholeheartedly support. It allows us to not only keep our staff sane, but it allows us to do better customer service to the folks that are reapplying and need inspections. So we're asking council to consider that. And then we made a couple of, um, just a very tiny edit to uh, the signage, so the ordinance currently reads that the sign that is required on short-term rentals be visible. And some feedback from the S T R committees and others were that it should be rigid. Uh, because some were like floppy and falling down on the ground and readable, so we added that language. So those are the amendments, they're outlined in um, an underlying strikeout form. If you make this amendment, then we will update ordinance ten oh three to reflect these amendments once they go into effect in early December. So asking council to conduct a first reading on ordinance twenty four oh six by title only.
Okay, do council, any council members have any comments, questions?
I've got a question.
Mm-hmm.
When you say readable, um, does that mean from the curb?
From the street, yeah.
From the street, okay.
Let Scott sort that out.
Yeah, well, the idea, the practical idea being you don't want to be trespassing on someone's property or feel nervous about doing that to get a phone number.
Just to get a phone number, right.
Yeah. Any other questions? Any comments from the public here that are here? Anything online? The quiet of October. Okay, so uh.
Spooky.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to read first reading by title only. Council Ordinance Number twenty four dash oh six. An ordinance of the City of Manzanita, Oregon, amending section one. Section four B, section four I, section five A and section five B of ordinance ten dash zero three. Establishing rules and regulations relating to short-term rentals.
Very good, may I have a second?
I second that.
I second.
I'm gonna give that one to Linda.
Yeah.
Linda seconds, yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Cast, thank you very much. You went into that. Nice to see things in place long enough that they can start to be improved on and made more efficient, so thanks to Scott. And uh, his team, as well as the Short Term Rental Committee for their work on that, so thank you very much. Now we're gonna move on to new business. Leila's got an amendment to share with us to the guaranteed maximum price contract, which is the G M P C that we talk about with Cove built for the City Hall project.
And maybe Josh, oh yeah, you can put, special guest Jesse Steiger.
Jesse, hi.
So.
Been a little while.
Yeah.
Nice to see you.
He's gonna walk us through and then get us to the finish line, so I'll hand it over to you, Jesse. Thanks for being here tonight.
Sure, um, is, do you want me to share my screen or everybody has it in person in front of them?
You could probably share your screen with you, Andy.
One second. Oh, um, we're disabled screen sharing. It's being enabled now. There we go. Okay. Um, this is frankly kind of a boring typical form we use for change orders, so not very interesting. Um, I'm just going to, um, really highlight on the cost changes that we're looking at. It's very typical in construction to, you know, get into it. And then we start to realize, oh, we could have added this. We should add this. Now's the right time to add in some of these things that maybe we either, um, kind of cut when we had a value engineer, um, or, you know, we just, you've kind of figured out some new things as you go. So, um, one of them was, um, to, we had part of the parking lot that we had left as gravel, but just kind of, uh, thinking about it more, we decided that actually having it paved and striped would be a lot more efficient. Um, and that's in the, um, that's in the west side of the parking lot, which is where all of your kind of guest and visitor parking is. Um, that's PR three. Uh, PR stands for pricing request. So they're kind of individual, uh, little mini change orders that we've negotiated. And these are all the final prices on them. Um, the next one, PR four is, uh, the standard colors for the door frames that the company offered were frankly kind of ugly. And it was, um, fairly inexpensive to change to a color that looked much nicer. Um, so that was a decision we wanted to make. Um, I'd like to come back to PR five because that's the biggest one and the one we might want to talk about a little bit more. PR seven, um, is, uh, once we decided to go for solar, um, they were able to kind of get some conduits underground to connect, um, the two buildings. Um, though we had planned for solar on the roof, um, what we didn't realize is that we needed to actually be able to connect over to the, um, other building. So that was part of that, those are already installed. Um, we did, um, add one door into the building, um, just to connect to an office and a conference room. Um, and then PR nine, um, is to add a generator to the project. Um, initially, this was not part of the project. And we had thought that kind of after this building was finished, um, Dan and Leila were kind of trying to think about how they could procure and install a generator after the fact. And, um, Dan had already started to look into that quite a bit. And, um, our electrician came back with a really great option for a generator that ended up being quite a bit cheaper than the options he was looking at. So, um, this has so many benefits because now it's part of the building. All of the, um, electrical will be integrated and working together with a backup generator, and it comes with a warranty. Um, so this, uh, this generator at this price really ended up being kind of a win-win, um, I think for the city. And then the last one, PR 10, um, this was, um, what was this one? We had some, there's some, a little bit of some grading issues. Um, and this was actually, uh, frankly, an idea by Cove Built is they were really concerned that we needed to modify some of the grading. They were afraid some of the, the, the sand that you kind of get on site and the slope of the site that wouldn't really kind of do the job it needs to do in your climate. Um, so we made some changes to the site to be able to, frankly, we think the parking lot's going to work much better this way. Um, and then, then the last one, so I'm going to go back to PR five, which is an intrusion detection system, right? Essentially a pretty fancy security system. So, um, we had, uh, this wasn't originally in the project. And, um, our electrician, um, the low voltage subcontractor kind of asked us, you know, is this something you want us to start looking into? Uh, which we did, it's important to have a security system. Um, so we went through all those steps. It was kind of an iterative process to decide what types of devices we should have because there's door contacts, there's glass sensors, there's a little shock sensor on the armory. There's, um, a handful of different, uh, security, um, options for that. Um, frankly, the price kind of crept up a little bit. And while we have it in here, we are still looking at another option. This is for a hardwired, um, system. So that takes a lot more labor to install, um, let's, you know, running conduits throughout the building, connecting the whole system. And so we're looking at an alternate that could be far cheaper, which would be a wireless system. Um, but the reason we wanted to include this in this change order now is because if the wireless system just doesn't pan out for some technical reason that I don't understand at this time, um, that this is kind of a backup plan. But I just wanted to try to explain that, that we do understand that that sound looks kind of expensive and we are looking at other options. We just don't know yet. Um, and then if we do choose that the other option makes a lot more sense, it's much more affordable, then this will come back to us as a credit um, against the solar panel, um, work, which is currently out to bid. That is a high level view of what's in here, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Here we go.
Uh, Jesse, what is the likely differential between the card wire and the wireless security?
I don't really know yet. I think it is significant. I think a wireless system could be more like a couple thousand dollars or maybe up to $5,000. It's a big difference.
Okay.
Any other questions from councilors?
No.
Comments from you, Leila?
No, I think Jess did a great job summarizing it. Um, I will note that 10,000, that Dan and I plan to spend 10,000 in the emergency management funds, which is a separate line item outside of this project budget towards the generator. So that affects the project budget thousands of way. Um, so that will be part of this too. But, um, no, and as Jess mentioned, we've been, you know, going through this for several months. We have talked through these ad nauseam. There's pa- pages and pages of backup information about this. And so this has been very well vetted and thought through. But, uh, the intrusion detection, we did sort of plan through this when we made some budget estimates for the AV, which if you recall is the soft cost side of the budget. And, um, this did creep up on us as being a cost that we think we might be able to adjust. And so, um, but we do think it's important to get it in now, just in case that isn't the case. Then we have our system in place when, as I mentioned earlier, the mechanical, um, plumbing and, uh, all that stuff starts in December.
Yep. So you're ready to go to do it then along with everything else instead of backing into it later?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Just one more question. So we were well prepared to expect, uh, change orders.
Yes.
I wasn't expecting to get seven at once, which is great because it makes me think that maybe there's not going to be another, uh, batch, uh, big batch. But tell me if I'm wrong on that.
No, I think, and Jess, you can kick me under the table if I'm wrong here. But no, we, we are expecting another one, which is solar. But I think pretty much everything else, we feel pretty confident at this stage of the project that we won't see anymore. But things could come up.
So, so what's our running total on the contingency then?
Oh, um, I should have been prepared for that. I'm sorry. Um. Oh, I don't have it memorized. I'm so sorry. I have to look it up unless Leila, you have that in your memory banks.
Do, but it's foggy, so. We're good.
That's the way to look at it, right? Is it, I mean, when you.
Yep, 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 yep.
Yeah. My guess is, you know what, I'm not going to guess. If you just give me, um, like a minute, I can look it up. Um, my computer is always a little slow and I'm on Zoom, uh, but give me a second.
Well, it doesn't sound like you're worried. It sounds out.
No.
Okay, good.
Well, why don't we go ahead with this then? The number won't affect a vote, I don't think. So would somebody like to make a motion on this? We are actually looking for an approved, to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution by title only. Council Resolution of the City Council of the City of Manzanita, Oregon, approving a guaranteed maximum price amendment to the Cove Built LLC GMGC contract, authorizing the city manager to execute the guaranteed maximum price amendment or approved change order related to the construction of the Manzanita City Hall project.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tom. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, passes. Would you hang on there for another minute, Jesse, if you like, while you're looking that up?
Yeah, I, I found it. Um, so I've already budgeted for solar and I put in a conservative budget. So that's like already kind of allocated in my budget. So after solar is done, we'd still have over, um, 40,000 remaining in contingency. Um, and that includes kind of some other budget adjustments, like we, uh, modified the furniture budget a little bit. Um, and so we're, I think it's, we're in a very healthy place.
And we have some very conservative placeholders for furniture. Like I mentioned, 10 grand that's coming out for the generator that'll adjust this. So we feel good about where we are.
Thank you for the question, Jerry. That was helpful.
Jess.
Thank you, Jesse. Nice to see you.
See you guys next time. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. It's a night for money. Item B, contract approval. This is good. Contract approval with the Oregon Business Development Department for $2.709 million for the Classic Street Connection project. So we're going to be discussing this. Leila will take us through it and then if all goes well, we will be approving, moving forward with receiving this grant.
Yeah, so hopefully it's a little easier because you're accepting $7,909 million. So this is, um, you might remember from when we executed our loan agreement with the Oregon Business Development Department, which does business as Business Oregon, uh, that we have to execute a grant contract with them. So this just sets the terms for that contract. Um, in fact, some of, so the city attorney's already reviewed this contract. We've actually made some amendments to our engineering contracts in order to reflect the requirements of OBDD. Um, so this just sets the framework for us to be able to request those funds. So this grant will be set up similarly as our loan, which is, um, and we budgeted for this in our current fiscal year budget. We were anticipating these funds. So it will be a reimbursement based loan. So there's certain things that we have to do in order to get that reimbursement. So for example, uh, the RFP, the Request for Proposals we put out for engineering, I knew before I even got the contract that Business Oregon was going to need to review that and approve it. They review and approve our engineering contracts. They ensure that our, um, our bid solicitation process and our bidding of the project is done. Um, so they have some oversight on that. I will say that, um, the experience we've had both with, we've received a grant for $60,000 from Business Oregon for the remediation of the asbestos. And then we are doing, uh, reimbursements when we pay, um, on the City Hall project. And they've been great to work with. Um, they, Nina actually does most of those, uh, actions with OBDD. And I think we get reimbursed within a couple of weeks, which is pretty extraordinary. So they're really efficient and I'm pretty, I'm now very familiar with how they do things. And so I feel really good about, um, this. The only thing that, uh, there were no real, there were no issues that the city attorney raised here. I will note that this is a legislative appropriation. And so the legislature can only appropriate funds from the general fund for the current biennium. And so you will notice in here that there's a June 30th, 2025 completion date. Um, we are in the same boat as I think the majority of other cities who have received this funding, that the legislature needs to pass another bill in order to make that roll over into the next biennium. Um, and we just recently had a meeting with the governor's office and some other folks. And we felt, you know, the risk profile of that is, um, I think is good. We're in, I think, really good shape for that. And Business Oregon said, you know, they would work with us no matter what. So, um, so I just want to note that because that is in the grant document and probably some of you read that, that, um, I don't personally have any concerns with that. We will be well into construction by the time that deadline hits. We expect our project to be completed by December and closed out by December of 2025. We're also in a really starlight position because the, uh, Manzanita Pines projects, which is a 60 unit project that, um, both city council approved and planning commission approved a rezoning of 12 acres, received, uh, lift funding, so that's tax credit funding from the state of Oregon. That project, we expect to come before planning commission in January or February. So it is tracking and moving, um, ahead. So that also puts us into a really prime position, um, in terms of ensuring that this funding carries over. But I just think it's important to daylight that, be transparent about that. But, um, we feel really good about, about taking that on. And we will have expended, uh, a good chunk of that money by the time we hit the end of the deadline. And that means we'll likely come back for contract amendment action on the city council to extend the deadline for that contract when that happens. So just wanted to point that out in spirit of full transparency.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. That's good, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I've just asked you today to approve this resolution that authorizes me to then sign that contract and then also, uh, start to initiate, um, a reimbursement. We've actually spent a fair amount of money, some legal costs that you mentioned earlier from Miller Nash came from the development of the RFP and, uh, pretty lengthy engineering contract. So we can start to get reimbursed for those things. We did some geotechnical work you approved a few months ago and, uh, some survey work. So all that stuff's reimbursable through, um, this grant. So once it's executed, we'll be able to apply to get that money back.
Good, council, any questions?
I'm glad you've had experience with them previously on the reimbursement process, but just to, uh, ask any concerns about cash flow for the city with a number this big?
No, not at all.
Yeah.
And we budgeted for this and anticipated this. So everything's appropriately allocated to the various funds, so.
Awesome.
And we've learned how to do that dance now with, with the, um, City Hall project.
Yeah, that's good.
Nina's done a great job keeping a source.
Anything else, councilors? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, I will move that the city council adopt Council Resolution Number 24, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Manzanita, Oregon, authorizing a grant agreement with Oregon Business Development Department for a grant in the amount of $2.709 million and delegating authority to the city manager to execute the contract with OBDD.
Have a second?
Second.
Double second, always good, double second, okay? And, uh, we'll give that one to Tom. I see Nancy looking at me like, who got that one? Uh, okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's great. That's another big step forward.
On your end, yes.
Yep, it is. And for affordable housing, um, which remains very much on everybody's mind. So excellent, thank you. More work to come, but really good tangible steps that everybody can see now. So I really appreciate that. So with a last item on here before we do council updates, um, that Leila alluded to this earlier. So this has to do with a change in staffing that you're making as we work through the, we got that right?
Yes.
Yes, uh, that has to do with Dan's departure and how we cover for Dan in an immediate sense, and then the work over the next year or two to, to develop staff. So I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, yeah. So, um, it's never easy when a critical part of your team leaves, but it's even more complicated when they're the entity responsible for your water system. So one of the responsibilities that Dan has had, or, like, since he became Public Works Director, is he is what they call the direct responsible charge for the well system as well as the water treatment facility. Uh, the well system is subject to an intergovernmental agreement with Wheeler in which Manzanita is responsible for providing a DRC, it's called DRC, on staff. So they have to be on our staff. And the reason for that is, is because the, uh, we have two IGAs with Wheeler with respect to our well system. One is the DRC, I-IGA, and the other is the IGA, excuse me, that sort of defines the relationship between both cities. So Wheeler owns the water right, Manzanita owns the infrastructure. So it makes logical sense that the city of Manzanita is the DRC because the DRC makes decisions about the infrastructure. So when Dan gave notice, we had a long talk about this through my tears. Excuse me, I'm just have a frog in my throat. I'm not crying, I swear. Um, because that is a kind of certification that requires a certain amount of hours, knowledge base around our own well system. Fortunately for us, Rick, in his hours at Warranton, will be eligible to take the certifications necessary to become the DRC within the year. So that's extraordinary. Um, and so we're working with the Water Resources Board in getting that lined up. So we're hopeful that he'll have that certification so that he can serve as the DRC for the well site. And that will allow us to, um, meet the requirements of our IGA. So what we're going to do and what Dan has graciously offered to do, since Dan already works like overtime at the fire department all the time anyway, um, Dan has graciously, uh, offered to stay on city staff. He will be, uh, if council approves, Dan and I have worked together to develop a new position. He will be, if council approves, Dan and I have worked together to develop a new position, which is called the Direct Responsible Charge Operator. And his sole charge will be to maintain that responsibility for the city. He will still retain, be a city employee. We will still be paying his PERS benefits and all of that sort of thing. And then he will be paid on an hourly basis. And so this job description reflects those responsibilities, which are in line with the requirements that we have for our intergovernmental agreement to operate our well system. I have gone round and round with the city attorney on this and we're all clear there as well. So I've spent a fair amount of time putting thought into this. And at the same time, it will offer Rick the opportunity to get continued coaching from Dan as he starts to learn our system. So the plan is, as I mentioned, Rick will be appointed interim Public Works Director. He will begin a new probationary period at that time and upon successful completion, it is, you know, all determined at that time whether to appoint him to that position fully. In the meantime, Dan will continue to serve as the DRC until Rick gets that certification. And then at that time, I anticipate Dan will then move to being a contractor for us because the city of Manzanita's distribution system, which is separate from the IGA we have with Wheeler, requires a level two certification for a water treatment plant. Even though we don't use it, we do need to have somebody who is able to do that and we can do that on contract. And so Rick, in the interim, means about, I think, I won't say, but he needs some additional time before he can qualify to take that second level certification. So Dan will be our DRC for the water treatment plant. Rick will be the DRC for the well system once he is certified. So Dan will still be part of the Manzanita family for some time. But again, that also affords Rick the opportunity to get assistance or reach out to Dan. If anybody knows Dan, you know that he would just do this for free on his own time. And so we want to be respectful of Dan's time and compensate him for his time. And so he will continue to serve as a resource to Rick as Rick gets up to speed. I can already say with confidence that Rick has really stepped in, stepped up and, you know, has got great judgment and we're already working together really well. So I feel very confident in his ability to do this. But to make sure that everything's clear, transparent, everyone understands what's happening. What I'm requesting City Council to do this evening is to make a motion to approve the job description. It's a new job. And then I am asking you to approve a resolution that sets a salary schedule for the DRC position. And once you do that, then once Dan goes to hourly, he will be paid at an hourly rate based on that salary schedule. He'll have a new title. And then Rick will assume the responsibilities of the Public Works Director.
Okay, good. It's been a lot of thinking.
Yes.
Nimble thinking, but systematic and deep thinking to cover a very important responsibility the city holds. Not just to the city, but also to our, our water district. So I'll thank you for the work that's gone into that, but I want to ask what questions we might have from council.
And I could note too that I talked with the city manager at Wheeler too, I guess, well aware that this is happening and yeah. I had no objections.
Any questions, comments?
Did you say there were two resolutions you were asking us to approve?
I just asked for a motion to approve the job description and then a resolution to approve the salary schedule.
Okay.
So just one.
Okay, so, and I, I think each of us has spent time offline with Leila on this. So this is not, we wouldn't be going this quickly if we hadn't already spent time thinking through, asking questions, what if this happens, what if that happens? I'm pleased to have, I'm very pleased to have this proposal and I'm pleased with how it was done. That our dependence on a couple of key, key people for our water system has always been one of the things that's been on my mind when we think about. And it's not unique to Manzanita, but just the unique task of running a small water system that people completely depend upon. I mean, most people, because it's done well, take it for granted and that's a, that's kind of a good thing. But when you understand what goes on with staff, what they have to know how to do, how they have to react and decide very quickly at times emergencies, it's a big deal to have everything lined up and also have some redundancy built into it. So this is good.
Yeah, and can I, sorry to interrupt you, Mary, but I did want to note and I want to give Dan some credit for this too. This has been something he and I have been talking about for some time. Jason Weiss was formerly on our staff, also at the fire department now. He had attained those certifications. So Dan is actually, I believe, both Jason, I'm sorry, Jeremy and Josh, who are our senior public works staff, have level one certifications. And so one of my goals and one of my directives to Rick was that everyone starts to get these certifications because that redundancy is so critical to the system. So I just wanted to add that. We are, we are on it.
Good. So may I have a motion regarding the job description first?
I'll make a motion to approve the job description for Direct Responsible Charge Water Operator as presented.
One second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, that's passed and a motion then regarding the resolution on the salary schedule.
I move that the council approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Manzanita, Oregon, approving salary range for Direct Responsible Charge Operator for the fiscal year of 2024 through 2025.
Seconded.
Seconded by Brad. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passed. Motion's passed. I guess everybody in their own way will run into Dan and get a chance to thank him personally. It's good that he is still in the picture. I'm glad for that. Not to mention presiding over the December celebrations.
That's a life commitment.
So that's a life commitment. Okay, we didn't really put that into a resolution, but we'll put that on the honor system going forward. Yeah.
Well, in this past month, Dan took me finally to get a full tour of the water system and Catherine, you were a part of that. Linda was too, along with Leila. And it just makes your head spin when he starts telling you about all the different moving parts. It's, he knows it so well. To think that there'd be a possibility that he'd just step out and we'd be, it would be a disaster for us. So I thank him
It'd be tough. Yeah.
For, for being willing to do this. So, thank you, Dan.
Okay, is there any, oh, council updates? Can we do those? Brad?
Sure. As usual, some information about the communications that we've had with the public and questions. She can imagine we got quite a few questions about water. Of the nine interactions we had with specific questions, five of them were about water. Questions such as the allowance. Some people wanted their used to check because of the change in their billing. We had questions about the UGB, whether or not or why they would potentially pay more than someone that lives within the city limit. Some questions, very specific ones about the ordinance and doing monthly billing versus quarterly billing. And we got an email supporting what we had done and changing things to a monthly cadence. Within the referendum, I just reiterate to everyone that when that is on the ballot, typically a referendum is put into place that someone questions a decision the city council has made. So that's what's happened with our change to monthly billing. So if you vote yes, that means you support the decision of the city council, which was to have the billing remain at a monthly cadence. So referendum supporting the city council or the decision they made would be a yes vote. A no vote would mean you would not support the decision your council has made and that we should be forced to revert back to quarterly billing. The other emails we got were regarding Classic Street. There were concerns about the burn piles or the potential that the piles of debris would be burned. That falls under the responsibility of the fire department. So we referred folks back to that. Do know at this time, we do not have a open burn ban in the city of Manzanita. So we have referred that information to the comprehensive plan team to consider as they move forward with comprehensive plan. We had a couple of emails about the dark sky ordinance, one of which was, does it apply to the urban growth boundary? It does not. Ordinances are applied to the city remnants. And we also had questions about the ordinance if new homes or contractors were being informed about the new ordinance. If they apply or ask, they are certainly informed, but it is the homeowner and the contractor's responsibility to make sure they are compliant with all applicable ordinances. And we did have some questions about the streetlights. All of the streetlights in Manzanita as of December 23 were changed out and are dark sky compliant. In some cases, there's been bleed of that light onto people's property. I myself had that issue called T-PUD and within 10 days they came out and put a shield on it, which did exactly what I wanted it to. And they made a little bit of an adjustment to the brightness of that actual fixture. So if somebody has some questions or issues about their streetlights, do contact T-PUD. They react rather quickly. A lot of these questions and emails that we've received and information and questions that we got in our conversations with councilors specific to the water topic, I will be adding to the frequently asked questions section soon. So keep an eye out there. We will have more information there so people can refer to that. And lastly, regarding the FAQs, between the last council meeting and today, we've had 230 visits to the FAQ page. And we had 40 downloads of the actual document that contains all of the questions and answers.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you, Brad. Yeah, Jerry?
Yeah, just briefly, and I'll be building on much of what Brad said. Brad and I were at the visitor center this morning, this afternoon, I should say, for a conversation with the councilors. And we had a good group. It was a small group, but it was a good group. And we carried on a conversation for an hour and a half or so and fairly wide ranging, but obviously focused on water issues. And the two things that came through, I'm clear, one is that there is confusion about what a yes vote means, what a no vote means. But as Brad pointed out, the council took an action that was then referred to the voters. So the question to the voters is, do you affirm what the council did? Or do you reject what the council did? And so a yes vote keeps the monthly billing. A no vote rejects the monthly billing. And I think we have some work to do to make sure that a rather straightforward understanding is, is understood. This group was a great group and, and, you know, smart people who care a lot about what's going on, but there was some confusion in the room. So hopefully we clear it up in the room and now I think we need to clear it up community wide. The other thing that is perhaps confusing, although not very much in the room today, is that the referendum is solely on the issue of the timing of a billing. It's got nothing to do with the amount of the bill, the rate of the bill, the rate of the water rates. And so I think, again, we need to just help the community understand what they're voting on, what a yes vote does and what a yes vote does not do. For that matter, what a no vote does or what a no vote does not do. So the good news is that the Manzanita today, I think, is going to focus on this issue in its upcoming edition. And I believe there'll also be a statement in the Headlight Herald regarding that. Are you, is that true?
I don't know.
I, I, I understood that they were doing a voter's pamphlet for the, all of their readership and they will lay out for voters what the referendum is all about. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Tom?
Thank you. Well, it's been an interesting month for me. I've participated in many of these conversations or coffees. And I don't know if my experience is unique to Catherine and I were the participants of this. But what I found was, was that the people that were attending these were mostly people that were supporters of the council to begin with. And I wasn't getting any access to people that didn't agree with my point of view to begin with, wasn't getting any information about what it was that causes them to feel like they ought to vote no and maybe address some of these things. So earlier, when we were talking about the bills that we approved, I talked about a friend of mine that I approached directly because I knew he was thinking differently than me and asking him, what's going on that I don't see these other people? And he described to me an atmosphere in this town of real divisiveness. That people just don't want to hear it. They're sick and tired of it. They don't want to listen. They don't want to tell me what it is that they might want answers to. Sure enough, as I talked to my friend a little bit, I found out that he had this issue about the cost of postage and whether there was a separate contract. And apparently that was an understanding that he had. And absent some discourse, we can't get that information out. So I'm finding this kind of frustrating. In one of the coffees, a gentleman approached me afterwards and wanted to know what I was doing about campaigning. And since there doesn't seem to be any opposition, I didn't really have any plans to go out into the community and buttonhole people and shake their hands and say, vote for me. But, you know, so then it turned out to be a frustration. So I'd stop people at the post office. You know, just end up in a conversation, what's your water bill? You know, are you getting into the tiers? You know, are you paying more than usual? Because, you know, our stats seem to show that most people aren't getting into the tiers. And I had some really good conversations. People that are getting into the tiers that live here, you know, they're avid gardeners and they're using a lot of water. And I see you over there, Linda. So, and so there's a differentiation. Most people said, but that's okay. You know, I understand. I'm using more. So it's all right. But the complaint, the other complaint that I got was that it all happened too fast. It was too much all at the same time. And I don't have an answer for that. I can't make that go away. We did need to take up the issue of the fact that there hadn't been a water increase in so long. And, and then get some recommendations about how to bring ourselves into time, into this timeframe. So, you know, if we have the discussions, it doesn't mean you're going to persuade me. It doesn't mean I'm going to persuade you, but at least we can learn. And I think that that's what it's all about. So I guess my plea to everybody is, is that if you're out there and you're thinking that, you know, you've got a different point of view, I'd sure love to hear it. You know, I can't respond to it. I can't learn from it unless I know what it is. So I'm really, you know, we've gotten so many complaints about we're predominantly a pointed group and we're not representative of the people that are actually here in the community. Well, I'm going to tell you, I'm trying. You know, I, I'm trying and that's all I can do. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. Linda, do you have anything this evening?
I don't have an update this evening. Thank you, though.
Okay. I, I went to the Tillamook County Workhouse for the first time. Not because of anything I had personally done. It's great. I'm quite relieved. I don't need a lawyer. At least that I know of. I don't need a lawyer. But I went to support a citizen who was concerned when the, and we saw her in council here, Regina, who is concerned, as were a lot of her neighbors, about the increased traffic on Nacarney Road. And it was kind of the, you know, the thing that kind of tipped it over because people have been talking about that for a while and, you know, what's going to happen? It's getting busier. Campers are bigger than they ever were. I mean, you know, we've heard all those discussions and anyway, when the proposal came up for the Tillamook County Commission to approve the park proposal, they did approve it and they tried to put some kind of conditions on what the county might be required to do for Nacarney because Nacarney is a county road. And Regina decided that that was a thing to appeal. So she did. And so in the county, what happens when there is an appeal to the Planning Commission, the county commissioners meet. So in one of the rooms, because it wasn't, didn't really look like a courtroom, it wasn't that dramatic. But in a, a meeting room with the three commissioners, they spent another But in a, a meeting room with the three commissioners, they spent another two hours, two, two and a half maybe, with the park service all there, going through what they had done and why. And with Chris Laity from Tillamook County Public Works, talking about traffic studies. He'd done what he's capable and not capable of doing right now. And Regina got to make her point, which she did very well. And I wanted to be there because she would have been by herself with her husband otherwise. And she'd put a lot of work and time into it. So it's good to see, it's good to see people figuring out how to best communicate when they've got a concern about something. And she took a step forward to do that. And, and I think it's going to lead to some actually good work longer term that we can do with the county to figure out what the future of pedestrian and bicycle traffic is going to be. And thanks to Nacarney, but not just on Nacarney, it's thanks to all the work that went into that transportation system plan. That seems already like 20 years ago, but that was relatively recent. We've got a framework now. We can sit down and talk with the county about this and, and we can, we can just work together in a better way. And it was, it was kind of heated, but it was also very collegial and people respected each other. So it was a really good thing to witness and see. And I continue to be impressed with the way that our county commissioners hold their office and how seriously they take it. So that was, that was a nice democracy moment as far as I was concerned. And I've been doing other things, but I will leave it at that for tonight. Okay? So anything else? Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Well, I would like to thank everyone for being here and I will call this meeting to a close at 8:11. Have a good night, everybody.